Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
All right, we called a meeting to order at 6:00, 6 o'clock, on August 15th, 2022, at the town hall. Motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Done. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Minutes. We have the minutes of August 1st. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? If not, motion to accept?
Done.
Second? John, second. You got that, Wendy?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Good job, Wendy. Thank you. Well, how are you going to report? Mike, you got anything?
A couple of members of the park community approached me about doing something with the drive up into the park that we did. It's kind of a drop-off on the low side. My suggestion was to use ditching material to just fill it in there and we go bring some of our ditches to the road and issue. One of the members wanted a sure pack through there. And then there's an area for the porta potty. Could take probably a little sure pack. Put that in. So that was brought to me. I just feel like I needed to know from them, what is it they want, really want to do there? Do they want to do the sure pack or maybe just want to do the ditching materials along the road? To fix the slope.
Well, you have to be drive, you're going to drive on it or is it just?
That's up to them.
If they drive on it, it's going to need something more than?
Right. If they don't have a passing lane there, I guess. It's just on the drive up into it, it's not in the parking area. So it's up to them if they want to be able to drive on it. If that's the plan.
Is it a roadie? Is that why they?
No, it's, it's, we built the road up like a foot when they put it in there. So there's really no shoulder to the road, basically. So it's either be hitting your ditching material to slope it off, but if you want to be able to drive on it and pass two cars in there, you'd have to put something a little more stable. Sure path or gravel, whatever.
Who asked you to do this?
Susan approached me about it first and then Al Sam's approached me about it.
Can you help Susan? They don't, I got her, you know?
No, I think there's some discrepancies that Mike said in what they, they had in mind. So I think we need to take time to get those straightened out and really bring recommendations to the select.
I agree.
Plus, we need to know if the sure pack is the way they want to go, what the cost of that would be and whether that fits into our budget.
Right.
So I think that, as Mike said, we're just not sure what.
No, no, I don't think we have a plan.
Yes.
As far as what we're doing, we replace the color. We've got some more to go. Dave's mowing and mowing them back pretty good this year, so. And I'm running around. Grading is probably not going to be too expensive with this sort of drives. Doesn't get a little rain. It was kind of hard to pack the roads back down through, loosen them up. Brained with the rain.
Were you able to deal with the problem with the beaver? Beaver? You mentioned a couple of weeks ago.
With Skip, Skip went over and he cut a hole through the old deceiver that's there and got a lot of rain now. And still, I'm not sure what he's going to do with that yet. Maybe he's in there, I think, talking to Bill.
Yeah, well, Wendy, Wendy said?
I asked him for a plan. He, I haven't visited the site yet, but I asked him for a plan because he wants to put in a pond in order to protect that culvert. And I don't understand, so I need to go see the layout, but I asked him to, before we go any further, to lay out a pond and about the cost of what it would cost to do that there. So, and he wants to put in a dry hydrant, which I think is a great idea. It would be great if, if the select were to talk to Locky and get them to share the cost of doing the pond and that because they don't have any, any dry hydrant. They don't have a fire hydrant anywhere near any of those houses over there on that part of Tangerine Port. There's a lot of houses over there, so they seem to be, seem to me they would benefit as much as probably more than we do with the dry hydrant there. And maybe they would share the cost if you then put in a pond or a dry hydrant. The dry hydrant itself, and you can speak to this because I don't care about that, the dry hydrant itself could be, often you can give a grant, a hydrant itself. But in building the pond and all the rest of stuff, that's a whole different thing. There is, I think they should look into that, I mean, yeah. But anyway, he, they're supposed to give you something.
I think we need a plan before we, we need a plan before we can do this.
Exactly. Yeah. That's what I told him.
Exactly, I'm talking about.
It's, it's the corner, the remarks of the road and.
Anderson.
Anderson.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Beemount, who's going to talk about Beemount?
Beemount, the, all four projects have been submitted. All the financial work has been done on them. I'm hoping that very soon, the 270,000 will be sent and then the 5% from the state, another 15,000 to be sent from the state. So we should have all that shortly reported to them. We've done everything we needed to do to get the documentation into them and that's all done. They, I'll make this fairly short. The lead road is going forward. There were some hitches and some arguments and then they said, oh, okay. And so the lead road is going forward. Jamie is warming it up right now and probably be poured on Wednesday. And so they're fine with that, that budget. And that's a 90% project too, so. And it's based on what it actually wants because we had some engineering in it too that we gathered in and then that paid. Supervision, what you call the management, town management, all added in for the price. So it'd be around another 800 and 500 million if they're done.
Okay.
And do we owe anything on what we received, the 270 and the 15,000? Or is it the town or anything on this project? Beemount?
We paid all money.
We paid it all upfront?
We paid for everything.
Yeah, we paid for that.
We paid all of it.
You guys, that's.
I agree with that. Thank you. So what is the total, Kathy's, what is the total amount of reimbursement we are expecting?
270.
Plus 15.
Plus 15. Plus 15 because this, the, the fed that went to 95% on this, went to 90% on this. And in our position on E-RAT is such that we should get another 5% from the state. The emergency response fund. They pay us another 5%.
Was that a total of 285, then?
Two. And change. I don't know if there's still been one.
Anything else under highway? Not? Looking treasure? I don't think she's on. Is Tim not?
No, she's not and she didn't add anything.
I talked to her today, she said she had nothing. Okay. We act on the resignation of the town administrator effective September 30th. I think the only thing we have to do there is fill the ad and let it get gone.
Well, you should, you should accept the.
Well, I guess we should accept the resignation, but we need to get this ad in the paper, A S and P, for example, because, you know, time is coming by. So I guess we need a motion. I guess we need a motion to accept the resignation? Okay. Okay. Second. Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I think we should thank Phil for the generous service to this community.
No way. All in favor, say aye. Close? Okay, so now I guess we need a motion to accept the ad and the dates that it's going along. Is that, is that what we need to do? I know we need to accept the ad, so we're going to run three weeks, I think. Is that it?
I mean, I mean, you want to run it. Yeah, I think it would be, so in the ad, I think it just, we're at the X's. If you have to do in the X's. And then whether you want to include the application form on it or you want, in this case, just have them submit a resume, whichever you prefer. That's, that's in this little print down here. You need to decide how you want, but what do you want it to say?
So Phil, on the website, it looked like there was the shorter version of the ad that was being printed and then a link to the town website where your, the town administrator job description would be. Is that right?
It'd be just like we did for the timing.
Okay. So I think that's a great idea because then whoever's supplying knows the complete story of the job, not just what we can contain in a small ad. But on our website, we then need to create that link and make sure that the job description is there.
Well, it would actually, what you have in front of you would be what will be on the website. One, one link that'll have that, with the job description and much like I did for that town. When it's just a question of keeping the application form there. I think that this got the problem, if this people who use the resume have a thing.
Although I think it's good to have some of the data that's on the application.
I do want, we can, I can.
Can you just mirror what we did on the, as far as the sources? Here's the half of those.
Is that okay with everybody?
I'm sorry.
No, just to use the same sources that we did for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that job link will only be the description.
And Phil, I wanted to ask you if it's going to be a comfortable situation for you to receive applicants for, for the job that you currently have.
I don't look at them, so I don't care.
Okay, all right. That's on file. Do we come up with a deadline date? A deadline date when these applications are due?
Well, we need to pick the dates. Say you want to run three weeks?
Three weeks, sounds good.
Okay, that will start next Wednesday with the Commons and with Vermont County. And then it'll go on BLCT sooner and, and I can put it on the, the road site sooner. We have local roads. And do you want to handle the unemployment, but.
When the deadline for the papers coming up, do you want to put something in there after?
If you want it.
Yeah. Usually it's around the 25th of May.
Deadline is on the month of today, if that's our reason. Just gives you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that timing will work.
So again, we don't have a formal motion, but can you write it down what we're going to vote on? I mean, the dates in three weeks.
So you want to, give me a date then, that it's the deadline for applicants.
It'd be three weeks.
So we dropped the end, I think it's, yeah.
September 15th. Okay.
So you're saying that we'll run this?
This one, the next one is the.
Next one.
But some of the BLCT will be sooner on our website.
Because they, I believe like the job like they, I think they usually post them for a month or you can post them however long you want. Whatever the date is, we were in the problems last time, of a date, deadline date, the person is going to turn out that it was the last day the ad was run, the last day the ad was run. So that's why we shifted it over three days or whatever it was. So we should do the same thing.
Okay, it would be the 24th, the 31st and the 8th, no, 7th and then the 15th would be the, so I wouldn't run it 14th, but I would just do the, what I just said, 24th, 31st and the 7th.
So this is solid, the deadline is reasonable for the 15th of September.
Yeah, I mean, it gives the people, yeah, the ad on the 7th, a full week. And the people will look at it early, almost three weeks.
The other thing is we'll run, yeah, like the time also.
Okay. All right, so who made, who made the motion? Somebody make a motion in one second.
We'll make a motion for the.
The ad, the one, three weeks, the whole, the whole thing we just discussed. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'm not going to run the ad on administration. I say mirroring what we had just done, but I would offer to say format.
It works for you.
And we're going to wrap this up on September 15th.
The deadline to receive the applications would be?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
The other thing I, I would like at some point the select board to look at, the job description. With a serious thought of, when a candidate, candidate looks at this, there's a lot and I wonder how many candidates we're going to get.
Kathy, I think, I think what has to happen, you run the ad and then the candidates come in, you're going to pick the best one who's going to have the qualifications. And then, then you can decide later. I mean, you can't, you're not going to be able to, and pick candidates. Some candidates are going to do stronger one way and.
I understand that though, but I, I think the board needs to look at all the duties and responsibilities that it has done. And there is overlap with some of these things and we need to take a look at.
I don't think we need it, maybe even as extreme, but what are you going to do for hot information?
Yeah.
Take a serious.
I don't think it should be the same one that we just used, but at least I would think it should be, because it could be.
What, same committee?
I'm thinking it could be a new one for, like.
Why?
I don't care why. Did you see it like?
All right, but that's, that's another, let's, let's.
Just in terms of discussion, Joe, since we're mirroring the highway department process, it seems like we should open the position up to internal candidates first in, in the highway department. Kathy and I, as the personnel committee, entertain possibility of applications internally. It seems like we should do the same for this job.
I don't, I don't understand.
We have.
Open our job up to any internal candidates for the job first. Not before running the ad.
Well, internal candidates perhaps.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm.
I think that we would open up possibility up for people to apply and see if they're on the chart. I can't pre-determine who might be a candidate. But it seems like we should at least offer our people who are current employees the same opportunity as we did with the highway department.
No, I would agree with it. I, I just don't know who needs.
Well, why, why, why you don't, you don't, you don't fill the air?
Oh, sure.
And then, and then the deals add later on, whatever. Okay?
I, I'm on what Laura up to be.
Let's, let's deal with the air first and then we can discuss the song now.
Okay.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, now, to your, to your concern, if you want to open it up, you have, the ad's not going to run for a week. How do you want to, how, how do you want to do that?
Well, Kathy, I don't know how you feel about this, as the personnel committee, I, I think we should just make it known as we did with highway group. I mean, what we did with Mike and Dave's, we just gave them a call.
And we have all the employees here set for one.
That would be great if we could drag some of that up. It'd be a lot easier.
We might consider going forward for this job. And I don't think they should be not included and excluded. It's a, it's a great job and I, it just seems to me unfair than it would be to make it known.
So you're going to talk to Jeff? Yeah, do it. If I really.
I don't think I give a.
Let me make sure. Let me make sure. As, no, it's fine. Okay, it's fine.
I mean, do you think I have his?
We'll just send an email.
He's still here?
Okay.
I do want to say one thing though. I did reach out to Sue Pom because she expressed interest a year ago.
Who's this?
Suzanne, Sue.
Oh, oh.
And she has 20 years of municipal experience and I did send her an email and I said, if you're still interested, there's an opportunity. And she wrote back and she said, if it was a year ago, I would apply, but they just bought a house in Pomell. She's, she settled, no one's complaining and husband now has, has moved from Drudge Cottage, so that she's, I don't know, so there. But she would have been a good candidate to be, I didn't want. Okay, hi, committee. What's going on?
We're just waiting for the deadline of the 24th. I hadn't talked to him for a couple of days. I don't know if there's been any, a lot of activity or not, but we're just waiting for the 24th.
They get any updates?
I don't know that.
Does anybody know that?
As of the other day, we had, have you heard?
I asked, so I know and we've got three.
Okay. Three more besides the one we had or three?
No, we've got three, four, as of this.
So I knew of the two then, yeah.
Same one? The same ones that?
Yes, that we're carrying over, so we won't do that. If John, if I'm here tonight.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask who it was.
What would you give the idea of posting this job at MKT if June were here? I mean, I'm thinking that a lot of people in town go through MKT and people from out of town go in there, get a cup of coffee or whatever. And it just might capture someone's attention. We have a little time before the deadline. Having said that though, I haven't talked to June about this, it would be totally up to her whether she permit that.
We posted on a little board.
Well, merely posted outside here, that would make more sense, other than asking her.
It is posted.
Okay, so it's already done.
Yeah, I was thinking that there's more traffic.
But she, I mean, I certainly would have a problem, if she would or not, but I certainly would have a problem. I don't like it.
I think they have voted board, Kathy told me.
I don't know.
And there's so much traffic.
There used to be, I remember before Bill came, I was, I was doing the agenda and we posted at the town hall. We posted at the library and we posted at MKT, but I don't think we posted at MKT anymore, did we?
The problem with, with posting at MKT, there was no, it was like trying to post on this board outside the ballpark here. And so, and, and I, and they didn't want to at the time, just reserve something for the town, so I stopped posting there. So it was at the library and two places here. We have that at the three places, like the library is outside this building and inside this.
I mean, I could ask.
That's great.
Don't, don't ask.
That's just right.
I can mention that to the real estate people too, because more and more people are buying houses here and would like it to be able to live here, but can't because of the work, there's nothing to do. So my point being that nature, that's a source as well.
That sounds great.
Hey, the more the merrier. Committee reports, the cemetery. Mr. Dow is, has agreed to donate the 120 acres acre. A conflict has arisen. He is in land use. And Phil, you can explain the possible situation that we're going to have to face and speaking to the authorities today.
Yeah. The land use, well, the most important thing, if you got us, when this transfer takes place, right before it hits the office here, you have to file the LV that's Melissa Victor 314. Form transferring the property to the, to the new person, which is the town. Ordinarily, there would be a fine paid by the town, since we don't have anything in, in current use. But since the town is going to be taxed, it probably won't be, he says it's only happened a couple of times and he says he should, it's way of finding it. But the complication is, he has to do for that three quarters of acre that he's giving the town, redo his land use maps. His forester has to redo the land use map. Don't know what that costs, don't know how complicated that is, I have no idea. Tim Morton would have a really good idea. He's a forester and he probably does this. And, and Nick, who I talked to, who said that that would probably, that probably work. So like everything else gets complicated simply because there's all these rules. But if the town is going to pay all the cost and there, there would be that cost of him redoing his, his, uh, current use. Now, the thing, the thing with that LV 314, if you don't file it properly and timely, he has to start over. That can't happen.
So we're going to have to research this thing and see how much it's going to cost, but he is, he's agreed. Now, I did reach out to Mr. Jones, who was the other abutter. And he's still thinking about it and so he's going to let me know what John and I know in, in the end of August, beginning of September, or that he's still interested. And then we would have to go meet him together, we have the two pieces. So that's, that's where that thing stands.
Bruce Jones. Bruce Jones.
Bruce Jones. He bought time in this place. But, you know, I don't, he, he's, you know, this is pretty long now, six months, year or whatever. So I'm not sure whether he's had any issues, but we need to find out at the end of the month or in September when he comes back in and he's willing to meet us again. But there is a problem, if he doesn't really understand, is that right now they use the cemetery as a right of way to get to his property, but his real right of way is not, not passing it. So once we shut him out, then somebody's going to have to open up this right of way again, which has got huge trees in.
Is that Jones or Dow?
Well, Dow doesn't need it, Jones is the one that's got it.
Jones would.
Yeah, so that would be another complication, but we'll face those problems when it comes.
No, please, oh, go ahead, Kathy. Do these same rules apply if he's, if Dow sold us the property or do they only apply if he's?
Doesn't make, doesn't make the town out as long as you transfer the property.
Okay. Well, Billy mentioned it has to be in a time, done in a timely way. Is that up to the town attorney?
I would, I would do that or I would ask Tim Morton if he would help with that process because I'm sure he's dealt with it on other properties. But, but if he's not familiar with it, you need to have somebody familiar to make sure that when you transfer it, that everything is transferred right and that he's taking care of this, for this mapping.
I guess I'm.
I think what Phil's, what Phil's, this is probably not going to happen for six months to a year and there'll be another administrator. So we all have to, we have to keep in mind that whoever is going to take those place, that whether it's the administrator or the attorney, but it has to be done. So that, if, if it actually comes to pass, so.
I thought, I was referring more to the, Larry Slayson, that's the attorney. Cause you sent something today.
About the?
From BLCT.
Oh, that was the gift of the land.
Yeah, yeah, that was gifted. I wanted to make sure.
This is addition, what you sent.
Yeah, that, that was simply a question of when land is given to a town, can the select would accept it and do what they want with the land? And the answer to that is yes, with the caveat that you better know that you're not getting a, what is called a super bonus site, that you're going to end up having to clean up. And I mean, that's all extending, but basically you, you need to know, you have to have somebody do a title search to make sure there's no problem.
So we would have to have the county do a title search and then we.
Yeah.
I think we got. Hi, committee?
We were going to go with the traffic ordinance, but talking with Bill, Bill said we should wait until the sheriff department gets back after they've gone over. So we should probably postpone that. Am I right in that?
I have a, I have a message to the first sergeant, ask. I have a, I have a message in to, the first sergeant asked me for that, and I learned back from him, I know he was going through some medical thing, I, I don't know if he's on vacation, I don't know, but I'll talk to Lisa and see if, make sure he's around. If he's around, then, um, because I, his concern was that if the prop, if the property written, so that the court accepts it, and I don't, and so I want him, he doesn't need to go through all the detail, I just want it, the format of it is such that the courts will accept, and enforce it.
And who writes that? The town ministry or the sheriff?
Say again?
Who writes the, uh, the format?
It's all done. Then I sent it to him. It's in the format that Westminster's, that, that the first sergeant gave to me, but I, I didn't sign back. There are choices in there. Once it gets batched in, there are choices that the select would have to make, and, and your first meeting on that should be a public meeting with everybody on, on speed, on signs, on everything, and, and you should know, give an idea from Mike, the cost of implementing it, that there are a lot of signs that have to be added. Most of the speed signs are there, but if you're going to add stop signs, then we have a possibility of stop signs.
Yeah, and this, this has to be, you know, once it's in format, it has to be a public hearing, because there might be residents who don't want the stop sign, or they don't like the speed limit that you chose.
And that's, you don't have to do that, but I would try to a public hearing and make sure that, that you're, you hear from everybody, because it'll come back and bite you, it might bite you then, but it, it won't come back anyway.
You have a question on signs? Um, do you need the highway or, or V trans to do a study before the sign is put up?
No. We, we would if we wanted to go lower than, what they did years ago is they, in the law, they described the type of, of road, and as long as you stay within those guidelines, you don't need a study. If you want to go slower or faster than the guidelines, then you need a study.
I was thinking particularly of the yield, the yield signs that are confusing down by 121, uh, crossing over the, the origin that Kenny came to work.
You could, you could do a, you could have them study that intersection if you wanted to, or you can make the decisions on your own.
Okay.
And what, just to clarify, what are the steps, and I know we've just decided to postpone awaiting the sheriff's input, when do we schedule a public hearing?
Soon as, soon as we get word back that everything is okay, then the highway will meet, the board will then take a look at it, and then we'll, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda at a public hearing after that.
Got it.
So we get the first look at it, and we can make decisions, and then, what they can't make a final decision until they have a, a public meeting, because there might be some residents who don't agree, and the board might want to change their mind.
Thank you.
Um, parks committee, I, I mean, I don't think, there's nothing in there, we just have to wait. Personnel?
Question for Bill on, um, one of your to-do lists that you had sent us was clean up the personnel policy. What specifically did you mean?
I want to make sure that we have the final copy that you had done. I don't know that we did, so, so look at the thing and make sure that we have the, send me the, the one you think is final, and let me compare it with the one we have in the book. That's all I need to know, because I.
Yeah.
And, and then, and then I have one other request for the person after me, who is going to rewrite the policy at some time in the future. Send it to, send it to the town in doc form that can be edited, that we're going to edit, but it can be edited, so be on the computer, and if somebody wants to work on it in the future, they'll have it in doc form. That's all.
Are they dated? Are they dated?
They're dated.
Inside. They're dated inside, I just want to make sure.
Pick the one that's the latest dated, and there you go.
No, I, I wouldn't make.
Do that again, Bill, no problem. Double, double K, I understand what you do.
The only thing I can recall that we discussed last was the suitcase on Woodfold, which was the town policy. Does that need to be in the personnel policy?
No, you're following, help.
Buildings, I know we had things on the buildings.
Yes. The Division of Fire Safety came, made a visit, um, if you want to take them in order. The first thing, when it came up, and I told him about the closet on the, in the stairway, he said you cannot have a closet in the stairway, because people will put flammable's in there, and that is a safe space. When you leave this room in case of a fire, there can't be anything flammable in that space, so the closet cannot be there. So, after all, they're starting with the thought that I think we probably should decide on its fate, which is probably to eliminate it, and Kim and I talked today, and she wants to find a nice old, but nice wood cabinet, tall cabinet, that we can put just to the right side of the entrance door, where that multi drawer thing that we don't, you just that table sitting there, put it right there. There isn't going to be any other place to put it once that closet goes away, um, so something like that. That would be, that would be one, do it or have them build it, but that would be the place. So that would be the decision that we made, that we don't have any cost of them building, unless it's the same as what they are going to charge us.
And if, if that is the case, then we have to have a motion to take the $1,600 out of the four seasons contract.
Right.
Could we direct that, those funds to be used to purchase the kind of cabinet that Kim would like, or does the funding not apply to such?
That might not be a bad idea. Up, I would say up to, yeah.
Well, somebody want to make a motion for that effect?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is that we, we're getting rid of the, we're amending the four season contract, and that money would go towards a suitable desk or spiral, something or whatever you want to call it.
Interior. I don't.
Interior closet or something. Cabinet, that's it, feedback in there. Um, we have a, we have a second, can I?
I said.
Oh, do we, and, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Okay, Bill, let's take care of that one.
Okay, the 200 amp, uh, project is going ahead, a week from today, making, starting at 30:00 in the morning. Hopefully, you don't, we don't run into anything, and it's all marked out here on the lawn, and, um, once that is done, and the wires are over to the building, then electrician, who we've already contracted, will bring that service in and do what he needs to do to convert us to the 200 amp service. When the Division of Fire Safety was here, he looked at our handicap plan, he doesn't think that it meets the current standards, because the ramp itself doesn't meet the current standards for width, um, and it needs to be redone, but he's willing for us to do that when we have the money to do that part of it. However, there is no parking for handicap. And this little plan that I put in front of you is what I got back from the architect. I am to submit this with the application for a permit to use this building for a meeting room, uh, to Division of Fire Safety, um, and Division of Fire Safety is probably going to come back and say, okay, temporarily for the width of the ramp, it isn't wide enough, especially at the top corner, and, um, so, uh, but it'd probably say it's okay right now, but, but he insists that you need to have that parking now. And so Mike had told, so, so today I talked to two paving companies, I haven't offered back from them, I left a message, or two paving companies, I should say, Wilken, Wilks, rather, and, um, O'Brien, and I haven't heard back from them, but I, I, I sent O'Brien, no, I sent Wilks this because I have their email address, and, uh, hopefully we'll hear back from them soon. I would like to be able to, I'd like to permission from you to did this out immediately, because Division of Fire Safety says we have to have the parking before we can use this room, but under the bed.
I know, if I say where the parking's going, uh, Bill, but you just explained that.
Yeah, that, if you look, if you look, this is, this is the front porch, this is the front porch, this is the ramp going, this is the post office here, with ramp going down, with the two yellow posts that are in the bottom, and then those two yellow posts are in, in a block that is going to be a no parking block.
Yeah, okay.
And then to the left of that, on your thing, it's the, it's the parking area.
Okay.
And it's 13 feet deep, the first, the last three feet of it, or so, is, is the people, for somebody, this, it's that strip area for, for getting out of the vehicle. Um, and what we were talking before is, is have, pavement is probably going to be okay, they can, it, it's an up base, but where the lawn is to, um, put in road basically and have, Jamie is here digging these holes for the 200, maybe he could, it's not very much to dig, maybe he can use his little excavator and, and dig that out, and the highway can put the dirt in, so.
And that's all that they need to have out of the tree?
Yes. It's way, way into our.
Way with them.
So we need a, but I will talk to you, I, I will make sure that Bob.
So we need a motion to authorize Bill to put this paving project for handicap out the bid?
The other immediate.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
The other immediate thing is, that's right, folks, the doors.
They're going to, they're going to do that. If they're going to press that when they're doing the job.
All right.
So is there an additional cost for this to die from, um, what season?
I don't, I have no idea. I mean, we're in the contract for them to do that. They should have done this. If there is, I'm going to complain, because they should have done this at the beginning, because they didn't handle this up, any handicap parking at all. So I'll talk to Danny about that if there is.
And has the fire marshal approved already the parking space going in this location?
Yeah, he's fine with the, the location, he said that's perfect, you just needed, needed the plan. So, and there may be more, so the, the three people, and if anybody has anybody else, the three people I was going to, uh.
Two.
The two. Well, the two people, yeah, those two, those two people on the team. I mean, I can also ask, ask the Springfield, but it's, I may, I, I may have to ask Springfield, so I may need, yeah, if, if I need three of them, it's Springfield.
I still have a motion on the floor, so any, any discussion about bringing up the bid? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Do you have anything else, Bill, on the buildings or whatever?
I have one other thing, but not necessarily on the building, I'm not, but I'll, I'll think of it before the end, and I do have something, but.
Go on, go ahead. Want to do it under business?
Under other business.
Yeah, okay.
If I'm.
I just want to pick up on the point you made about all ceilings perhaps should have already added this parking space.
No, 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 Daniel, Daniel, that's the architect, the interior.
So would you put this situation in the context of a surprise? I mean, if you hadn't called the fire marshal up, Bill, how far along have we gotten on this project without knowing about the entrance way with the closet?
Well, we got, we got a whole year on it, because I was absolutely, when I called Landon a year ago, he said, when you're ready to go, it's to make your permit. I called Landon this year, and he said, why didn't you have us look at it? And so Landon Wheeler is this guy's supervisor over at Division of Fire Safety, and, um, I didn't really like his phone either, but they, maybe he's having a bad day, but anyway, so when Steve, him or he said, yeah, he's looking, so we wouldn't have known about it had we, um, had Landon said something to me that last year.
Well, it was a good catch.
Well, the other thing, the other thing is, we came up here, and he did go look at the back stairs, and said, they can be done in the future. They will have to be sealed, they will have to be enclosed, because it's outside and wet, but we can do it when, again, when we have.
And they didn't look at the back?
Speaking of that, they were going to give me that information. Speaking of that, who would have said it would be that information that you have on that?
I do this for a long time.
All right.
But, okay, yeah, I don't, every, all the, everyone I talked to at that time, I hadn't found somebody our size, that is, everybody I talked to was talking about redoing the fire escapes on a huge building, and we were not within, anywhere near the scope of worth that they go.
And you also discussed the capacity for this room was under, is 50 and under?
Say again?
Capacity for this room.
Is dead.
Fifty.
And, and because it's 50, and we, and we accept 50, there's a whole bunch of stuff we don't have to do.
I see. That's good.
There are nothing on the wastewater. On the business, Bill, you have something?
Hopefully it wasn't.
Okay. Uh, public comment? I don't think we need an executive session. It's on here, we put on it, and I don't think we need that, I think we need the solvency. Uh, if not, the next regular meeting here is in three weeks, it'll be Tuesday, September 6th, which is, because Labor Day is on the 5th, so it'll be on Tuesday. Okay, uh, I need, we need a motion to.
Sergeant?
Anybody expecting? All in favor, say aye. Well, thank you for coming, Mr. Lundy. Anything in here?